Okay. The next item is item number eight, application for certificate of appropriateness in the, sorry, for 456 Greenwich Street in the Tribeca North Historic District, docket number sixteen oh seven nine seven, block two twenty-four, lot thirty-two, a building built in nineteen forty-two and enlarged in nineteen fifty. This is an application to redesign the building facade and construct an elevator bulkhead, a garden wall, and a canopy.
Good morning, Commissioner. Reba Ashby, preservation staff. The item before you is four fifty-six Greenwich. This is at the corner of Greenwich Street and DeBrosse's Streets in Tribeca North Historic District. The proposal includes redesigning the front facade by removing the security roll-down gates and the existing garage doors and the masonry openings, installing new storefront infill, painting the masonry white, and installing a new garden wall and a canopy. The proposal also includes installing two stucco-clad bulkheads at the rooftop, and as this is a one-story building, those will be visible from, over the primary and secondary facades from various vantage points. Is this working? Okay. Sure. Finally, as a note to the commissioners, the proposed material of the bulkheads was revised after the staff comments were prepared, so the staff comments reflect the previously proposed material, which was a copper cladding, but as I mentioned, the bulkheads will be a proposed white painted stucco. So with that, the architect Jean Kaufman is here to further elaborate.
Thank you, Reba.
Jean Kaufman, architect for the applicant. Our proposal, as Reba described, is to remodel the exterior of this building. The building's been there for seventy-two years, and it's been built as a freight terminal, set back from Greenwich Street thirty feet. Building's fifty by fifty on a fifty by eighty tax lot. And we're proposing to renovate the facades, to modify the exterior space, but not to add to the existing building. So this is the existing conditions. You can see the longer Disproses facade. This building is actually joined to another lot, and only the five bays to the right on Disproses, the upper left-hand image, are in the Historic District. The Historic District goes down the center line of the block. The other views show the corner condition where it has two exposed facades. The ground floor today is approximately five feet above sidewalk level with a sloped exterior space. We're in the Tribeca North Historic District, and as I mentioned, the district boundary for the Historic District goes down the center of the block, parallel to Washington and Greenwich. Our client actually owns a couple of lots also on Greenwich that are outside the Historic District, and you can see the configuration of the property, fifty by fifty on a fifty by eighty tax lot. This is the streetscape on Greenwich, showing the block directly to the south of us, our building that's called Landmark Building, but they're all in the Landmark District, and then the adjacent buildings to the north of us. On the block to the south of us, sixty percent of that block front is also a one-story industrial building, and the buildings for the rest of that block and the rest of our block are between four and six stories. This is the existing and proposed ground floor plan. Like I mentioned, the, we're not adding to the building. It's currently set back from Greenwich meets the street wall on Disproses. We are proposing to lower the ground floor to actually what is the floodplain, which is, depending upon the height of your sidewalk, between five inches and two feet above sidewalk level, the sidewalk being highest on the north end of Greenwich and being lowest at the, at Disproses side, at the west lot line. So there will still be a small level change, but less than there is today. We're proposing an elevator and a stair which goes to the roof, which are the two bulkheads that you'll see. We are setting the elevator away from the adjacent building to the, to the north to avoid having any underpinning or other kinds of structural issues with, with that building. But it's set back thirty and forty feet from the, from the facade. The exterior base is just going to be paved with concrete pavers and will be fairly close to, to level with a planter along the north lot line of that exterior space. The storefront proposed replacement is for folding casement doors on the Greenwich side and folding casement windows on the Disproses side. The roof currently has a couple of bulkheads and some equipment. We're proposing to rebuild that roof at roughly the same level it is now, but it's in bad structural condition. Also, it's had a fire there, and we're proposing to replace it with a fireproof construction, but at the same level, with the exception that the elevator that we're proposing for access to the roof is going to stop two and a half feet below to minimize the height of the bulkhead and then have a ramp up to that level. The facade on Greenwich, currently it's garage doors. We're going to maintain the openings as they are. We're adding two brick piers as intermediary piers, and we're going to have a repetitive ten and a half foot wide opening for three openings, and then a building entrance to the north with a canopy above it. We're proposing to maintain the brick that's there and then to paint it. On the Disproses side, likewise, we're going to be removing the roll-down doors, to replace them with storefront, maintaining the size of the openings, and we're also proposing a six-foot-high brick garden wall that's around the exterior space on both streets, and you can see in profile the proposed canopy. So this just shows some more information on the relative heights of the bulkheads, and you can see on the left what is proposed outside of the district on the balance of the site, which we're proposing as a new eleven-story building. The details of the garden wall, we thought that it would be important to mark the street, but, and of course, it's built up right now, but provide something that's more sympathetic to the streetscape. We'd like to keep materials which are from the district, so it's brick with a base of metal, and I'll show you some precedents for that. And we have some details in the brick where the brick is actually, sorry, the point there. The brick has a pattern that's built into it at this level over here, and the signage is quite discreet. It's only eight inches high and two feet long, one sign on, on the corner and one side by the entry, and then there's a pair of open steel mesh gates that would give access into the, into the, to the site, into the exterior space.
But the, the brick wall that you've shown is, that's going to be painted, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. We're proposing to paint all the brick. I'll come to it in a moment, but the, the reason why is that the existing building, unfortunately, has two completely different color bricks on the two facades, one being yellow brick on Greenwich and the other being red brick on Disproses. So although we originally thought we could restore the brick to its original color, I don't think there's original brick there on at least one of the facades, and it, it looks kind of odd. So we thought painting the brick would be one way to keep the material which is there, but to sort of unify the building. And we're proposing for the, the brick wall, either to reuse brick from the portion of the building that's demolished outside the district, or other brick that matches, but then to paint it, because there is no one consistent brick or brick color.
And you're repurposing this building from a garage used to retail, is that correct?
It's an eating and drinking establishment.
I'm sorry?
Eating and drinking establishment. So we have some details here of the storefront. The storefront's proposed in wood with a mahogany natural finish with operable lower portions and fixed transoms. And we, we looked at these details with, with the staff as well, and we have a window system specifically for this. And then this is the similar details on the Greenwich Street side. We're maintaining the heights of the openings. This is fifteen feet. The, the other ones have a sill of two and a half feet. These go down to the first floor level. The canopy is proposed as metal and glass. I'll show a couple of precedents. There's a, quite a few canopies in the district using metal with some kind of fill material above it, including some later projects which have glass for it. It's for weather protection, and we also think it's an element which you find throughout the district, but we wanted to do it in a contemporary way, using the, the language and materials that, you know, Historic. So this shows the condition of the brick. You can see over here, the entire Greenwich facade is actually this yellow brick, although it's been painted to be red brick in many areas, however, are deteriorating. So these are some of the precedents that we looked at in, in coming up with these ideas. You have wood infill storefronts, in this case, in the natural wood material. You have a, a language of the bases of buildings, of the canopies that are here, in this case, with glass, in some cases with corrugated metal, but expressing the, the architectonic elements and structural elements of this in a significant way, which we picked up on. You have metal bases of buildings because although there was no floodplain regulation, there was a whole history of flooding in this area that people are very aware of, and so there is a significant water table with durable material at the base, and we're continuing that in our design. And I think that the question of what happens on the ground floor, is this still working? Over here, and, and the color, we, we have a number of facades in the area where the, the base is treated differently and, in some cases, painted white. So this is effectively a map showing the locations of where the views are taken. I'm going to show you six views of the building existing and proposed with respect to visibility of the bulkheads and the look. So existing condition on the top, a mock-up on the bottom left and the rendering on the bottom right. You can see the very small piece of this bulkhead, and you can see where the view is taken across the street. Same situation with a diagonal view taken over here without visibility. This scaffolding here will not, the stair bulkhead is suspended from this. It's actually not visible. The scaffolding's actually not, is above that, that point. The view on Disproses, there's no visibility. This is a view a hundred feet down the street to the east, across Greenwich Street, and another hundred feet beyond with some, some visibility of this bulkhead. And two hundred feet beyond with some, very small amount of visibility, and beyond that, it's invisible because of the adjacent building's block view.
Is this building, do you know whether this building was considered a contributing or a building in its district?
I, I believe it's, it's not considered one, although it's described not as being a style or non-style building, and it has been there for seventy-five years.
It just seems, it's unfortunate to me that this, this building, this site actually deserves a much taller building, and while we cannot force you to do that, it's just unfortunate. Would have been a, a building that had a higher street wall that actually connected to the streetscape would have been a better response for the site. I recognize that this is part of, I think you said, a larger development, so we have this piece in front of us.
But why can't it be taller? I mean, it's-
We, we could definitely ask them.
Program reason?
Is there a program reason why?
Well, it, it is possible to build it taller.
Right, I think it takes away from the height in the other portion of the district, probably. Is there, have you, did you ever explore a design which had more of a base on this portion of the site?
It's theoretically possible. I mean, the zoning does permit a taller building, and we are using the FAR on the balance of the site, but the configuration of the site is extremely awkward. It's an L. It's a hundred and sixty feet long, and the feeling was is that it did not make for a, a good configuration. Also, the, the height limit is actually a hundred and ten feet, and the zoning's meant for that, and I think that would be out of scale with, well, what's there today. And so the, the feeling was is that it made sense to concentrate the FAR outside what was the Historic District, and if you look beyond on Washington Street, directly across from our site on Washington, outside the district, that's exactly what's there and what's being built in at least one other site adjacent to that. So we felt like this building would be in context in, in that portion of Washington Street, and we would leave what's there for the last seventy-two years.
Right. I think my concern is that even if you want to retain this building, which is what you're doing, right, you're not tearing down the building, you're retaining the existing building and putting it to some use with some changes, it's almost like with what, the treatment of this is going to read like a new building, and in fact, it just seems that the, the color that you've used, particularly the color, it seems very disconnected with the district, and I don't know if there's some things you could do, even if you want to keep this one-story building, that you treat it somewhat differently that makes it more harmonious with the streetscape. And it's, I, I wonder if it's just by chance that we don't really see good photographs of, of this in its streetscape, and I don't think there's any gesture to even maybe the base of buildings where you have street, you may not be able to do this full six-foot street wall, six-story street wall, but some kind of gesture to at least the ground floor that I think this really doesn't do that. So it's, to me, very, it sort of sticks out of nowhere, seems very awkward, and I, I just feel it needs to do, be looked at, yes.
Couldn't agree more. I think there are two approaches here. One is to knock this building down and create a building in scale with the district and have it, have it be a, a color that is consistent with the district, or keep the building as you are, but don't be so embarrassed about this building. I mean, I think you're gentrifying it to death.
Yeah.
And I think the whole, yeah, I think the whole, the whole story of this, this kind of cynical story frankly, is shown on the last page, and that's the whole story. You know, put all the FAR, go as high as you can, immediately outside the district, and then paint this little remaining remnant to match your, your thing, so it's not so embarrassing. I, I think this is very cynical, and I think you're right in the middle, and it can't get approval, for me, can't get an approval doing it like this. I think if you're going to leave the building, then more or less leave it alone. I mean, you know, you can, you know, eating and drinking in a cool renovated garage is pretty cool, and we all know how that is, can work, and you don't have to add all these extra mullions and tart it up so much. At least this is my feeling. Or come back to us with a, a consistent building that wraps around the corner.
I know that I started off this discussion, but actually, why don't we focus just on questions first, and we'll take public testimony. Are there, are there questions for the-
Comments.
We'll go into comment session after we take public testimony. Any other questions? No, I stopped at that. Any other questions? Or do you have a question?
Well, he had, the canopy, I was, I wanted, is to know just about your references for that canopy. You showed canopies, but most of those canopies are canopies just at the end, like on the outside of the taller building, you know? And so I'm just, I don't really see, that, that canopy actually looks like sculpture, which is not bad. Sculpture is good. But I'm not seeing the relevance for connecting it, for connection to this community.
Okay, I'll go back to the images. So these are some canopies from the district, and you can see they're, they're, you know, quite substantial in terms of the amount of area that they cover. They have this sort of gridded organization. They do not have significant vertical elements. They have suspension cables in, in some areas, and there seems to be a clear language of these pronounced structural elements with a very light infill on the top and in some latter-day examples with glass. And so in fact, I think that's also a description of what we're doing, although our language is, is more contemporary than some of these which are, you know, historic canopies. So the, you have this steel frame which is here, you have glass that's on the top of this, and it is located actually solely at the entrance, but does actually have a dimension of forty feet by six feet, which I think if anything is smaller, but somewhat in scale with some of the others in the area.
The best would be entrance for the restaurant.
Correct.
Entrance to the restaurant.
And the wall height is what-
We're proposing the wall height at six feet. We thought that there, there should be something that demarcates the, the property line and to a certain extent gives a certain amount of, of privacy, so it's really calibrated to eye level, but above eye level, we wanted it to feel open.
Okay. Why don't we take testimony? I'm sure we'll have more questions for you, Mr. Kaufman. Gene Powers? Is Gene Powers here?
Yeah.
Okay. Barbara Zay? Each, each person will be given three minutes.
Barbara Zay, the Historic District Council. HDC finds the simple infill of the openings to be an appropriate change, but feels that the bright white paint would be a mistake as it is not contextual to the district. Cleaning the brick and leaving it unpainted would celebrate the industrial character of both the building and the surrounding area.
Thank you. Gabriel Douglas? Donner?
That's fine. Danner. I'm anywhere other than across the street, so I'm on the fourth floor, so I'll be looking over that space. I have three minutes, so I'm going to keep it very real. Like, was I think the quarter spoke and said it was cynical. I think probably speaks best about this proposal. It's been sneaky. They, they're going to skirt the Landmarks Commission by building the eleven-story hotel right behind it. The elevator is to drive the traffic up, just like the James Hotel. And with all the respect we want to, it is a neighborhood. The awnings that you showed, there isn't one of them within three blocks of our area. So if we're on Lake Street, I'm the first one of those type awnings. If you cared about the awnings or even that, even that simple detail, you would have looked at the neighborhood and said, let's put an awning that represents the neighborhood. And then you go white, and it's not a meatpacking district, it's not a garage. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Davidson and Caleb Davidson?
Just Jessica Davidson here. Basically, I also live in the building across the street, and I reiterate what Gabriel has said. Same place, the white building, the canopy, that garden wall is out of context, and I think it's, it's there to serve the purpose of making enclosure for an outdoor cafe that's going to generate, I think, a lot of noise. The elevator going up to the roof, I've heard things about that there's going to be a roof area with additional seating. That's not a concern for the neighborhood. And yes, using the FAR to build up the hotel in the back. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd James?
I also live in the building across the street. I've heard Gabriel say, white, the building looks like a long mammy. The wall seems to exclude you from the neighborhood from even seeing this particular building. And if there's going to be a roof deck, avoid wearing casuals for a building that's on DeBrosse's Hudson House, all kinds of parties and weddings and stuff like that. It's completely disorganized. That don't even, in the area.
Thank you. Is Gene Powers here?
I also live across the street, but four sixty-five, I've kind of heard from Gabriel, and I agree that the white is maybe out of place, and I agree that there's a little bit of uncertainty about the structure that people chose, and white, the outside wall and that, the roof deck. What Todd just mentioned is, I bet it was top, just behind my, my front, on my, my faces around the street, my bedrooms, the two bedrooms, and you can hear everything from the rooftop. There's so many houses down in the past that it's an age concern. And we don't live now, and you want to speak, you have to try to answer this by-
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right. Community Board, One Manhattan, has submitted the recommendation. They recommend rejecting this application, and they note two points. One has to do with the color being inappropriate and that the canopy is poorly conceived, and they also conclude that the applicant's missing an opportunity to design a structure that's more contextual and contributing to the Historic District.
Okay, I'd like to respond to those comments. I mean, I think it's interesting coming here and not proposing an addition and not proposing a new building and having some people object to that. I mean, especially after hearing, you know, other applications which are more typical where people are proposing additions that somehow don't find everybody supporting. I think that, you know, we absolutely have the right to renovate the building at size. I mean, obviously, you're going to tell us what type of renovations appropriate or not, but I think that the, the issue of whether or not this should be a larger building is effectively moot, because that's not our application. And I think that to the extent that we are proposing some alterations to this building, unlike some of the other applications that you just saw and so on, given that this building is not necessarily a significant historical building and that we're making fairly minimal interventions, I would, you know, suggest that over time, somebody else may come and propose something else. We're not looking at this as a solution for a hundred years. And I think that the, the notion of trying to clean this building up is a positive one. I don't consider it to be a, a cynical approach. In fact, I think that the building, if people had been asked about it as is, people would say, well, you know, we don't think that this building is a significant building for this area. I think that was the, the chair's point. And so I think to the extent that this building can be improved without being replaced, I think this is all to the good, and I understand that some people might want to see something else on the site. As an architect, I wouldn't mind putting a large structure on the site, however, that's, that's not in the cards, given, you know, what the, the ownership wants to do here. Likewise, I think that the conditions with the neighbors, I, I'm sympathetic to. In fact, the proposal for our structure outside the district includes hotel rooms, but it also includes residential. So I think that if there is any concern about whether or not this has a negative impact on the area, whether it's noise or, or anything else, I think we would be affected as much or more than anyone else being the closest to the site. And I'll point out that the adjacent building to the north, unlike many other situations that we've had and that are around where there are lotline windows, there are no lotline windows on the adjacent building, so although there are buildings across the street that may look at our site, the direct neighbor has no windows there. So I think that as far as our approach goes, I, I think that it should be looked at as an existing building with whatever might be appropriate alterations to it. Now, as far as the, the color goes, we could propose to paint the building a dark red color similar to some of the brick that's there, and in fact, that's what's there today. I think that we felt that the, you know, the, the context that's around here includes a number of buildings, including going up the block where the base is treated differently. The two buildings directly to the north of us on Greenwich actually have the ground floor of the building painted white, and I think that, as we all know, white, like any other light color, but particularly white, will fade and get darker over time, and I didn't want to start with a dark color that got darker.
Isn't there any way you can, could you retain some of the actual brick that you have there?
If, if, if the commission is, is okay with other elements and asks us to change the brick color, I mean, obviously, it's not our preference, not what we propose, but I think we're okay with that.
I'd like to propose that-
I'd like to propose that the ramps be maintained. In part, I mean, I realize that this is not a contributing building to the district. I lived on Disprosis Street for many years in the late 70s and the early 80s. And it, this building recalls what, the other thing that's missing, which is the West Side Highway. I mean, it's part of that heritage of Tribeca. So my proposal would be to keep the ramps, keep the loading docks and garage doors and the brick as it is cleaned up and not painted.
Right. I mean, I don't feel so strongly about the ramps. You know, this is a garage building. I think the idea of repurposing, it may take away certain features, but I'm not convinced that those features are really contributing to the district, even though I understand that Tribeca was, was up till more recently, an industrial area. I'm just, I think that, I recognize that we, again, I don't think we can force you to do a taller building, we understand that. But I think that it, it would help if you don't necessarily use the same vocabulary you're doing to this modern building on the other side and just be more respectful to the materials that are found more prominently in this district. I think if you come back to us with the brick, I think if we, if we want the window treatment to reflect the punctuation of windows right now, I think that will help in sort of recalling a more industrial building. So I don't know if it's necessarily the ramps, and it may have some interference with their program. But I think the other issue that I have concerns about is the canopy, and I know that other commissioners commented on that, it really does seem like something you don't necessarily need, and it doesn't seem like it's actually a part of the vocabulary. The canopies that you've seen elsewhere in Tribeca are very, very different. And while it may be metallic, their relationship to the building facade is completely different. This is something which in some ways looks like an entry to a residential building, but then it's metal and it has this slope roof. And I don't see that, I find it actually quite distracting. The other question I have is this six-foot wall, and I can understand if your choices are, well, let's keep this open, like it is right now, there's no wall, or let's try and contain it. You may want to contain it, but I just think this height is kind of neither here nor there. And is it possible to do a higher wall, but maybe something that's more porous, that would at least align with the storefronts?
But why is it acceptable to change the form of the building? I mean, and the form is, was an industrial ramped form for car service.
We do changes to the building every time?
In this case, I'm asking.
Right, because I think that, I, my understanding is that this is a building that could also have been, be completely torn down, and it would have been fine, because it doesn't contribute as some of the other buildings in Tribeca do, where have just much more stronger industrial features. This is, in fact, it's an automotive use. It's not the most typical that you would find. And I'm not sure by retaining the ramps whether it would really recall something that should be preserved.
I feel that it would recall something that needs to be preserved in that area.
Yes, Michael.
I, I agree with Fred's view of the building and yours as well. I think that, I think that we, I think that it's okay to remove the ramp. I mean, I think, the project that kind of jumped to my mind was that Gulf Station in Cooper Square, I forget what it's called now, it's been a club for years. But, you know, there, this kind of reuse is not uncommon, is not unheard of in New York City. The other project that this suggests for me, in terms of the brick and how it's dealt with, is, is the recent BKESG project that we just approved for the triangle in the Meatpacking District, where there was a one-story brick base that had been heavily modified over the years, and they were doing some restoration, but we asked for them to retain as much of the existing brick material as possible, because we wanted to suggest to the applicant to pay homage to and respect the layered history of the building. And I think that this building gets weird, and I think people have been commenting on it, when it starts to not look like a garage anymore, when it starts to look like a one-story restaurant in Scarsdale or something, you know, or Florida. And I think that if it stays looking like a garage, then it's, then it's, then it has a typology in this part of New York City that makes sense. And I think that one can look not only at the color of the brick and how the brick is treated, but also at the fenestration. I think the use of mahogany windows of this scale make it suburban in appearance, you know, Olive Garden leaps to mind, I don't know, what other ones. I think that, I think that a more industrial window, that would be in keeping with what one might have found here, or garage doors. Industria is another perfect example, you know? Industria is on, what, 13th Street, 14th Street, 12th Street in Greenwich? And we, and we saw a few years ago, another store that was in that same strip, another garage renovation. I mean, I think there's enough examples of buildings that have been, one-story garage buildings that have been repurposed for upmarket uses, that the applicant can look at those and kind of do it. And I think that you're absolutely right about the canopy. It's an apartment building canopy that's been rendered in metal, and the other ones are, you know, horizontal, linear, parallel to the street, and don't, this doesn't bear that relationship, and I echo your comments on the wall as well. I think it should be lower.
Other comments?
I would.
Chris and then John.
A cynical question. If we were to approve the redesign of this building, and once it's removed, does it have to be anything built?
I'm answering the question.
Well, with this new building going in, I mean, my cynical point is that if we approve the redesign of this building, the existing building, once it's removed, you know, we're presuming that the new building will be built.
It's, there's no new building. It's actually, they're repurposing the buildings. But I understand your question. Your question is if they choose to demolish this building, would they be, to come to the commission? And I believe they have to come to the commission for the demolition of this piece.
I guess is there's no FAR left?
So you mean if they demolish it and try and rebuild something? Yes, they'll be limited to?
But if they demolished it because of this new building going in, which looks like to me the second floor windows, you know, you have a, just, it's interesting.
That doesn't bother anybody?
Right, but I'm trying to understand the question is, the question is that if we approve something like this.
The redesign of the building.
Right. Are we foreclosing something that could happen?
Does that, does that enable demolition?
I don't think so. I don't think it, my understanding, and Sarah and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, whatever we approve here is what has to happen over there. So if they, they may choose not to proceed if we approve it in some shape or form, but they would still have to come to this commission. And the commission has to approve any demolition of the existing building or any refurbished building or altered building. So I think one can remain uncynical about that point, which is that we still have our purview over it, and I don't think this is going to necessarily erode any of our jurisdiction on the property.
I'm just appreciative of the last page where we see what's going to be there next door.
Right, okay. Yes, Diana, Diana then John. Okay, John and then Diana.
Okay. I think Commissioner Gogum hit the nail on the head, when it has this very suburban look to it. I would have run more with a CVS, though, than I would with an Olive Garden. But that said, I don't, I don't need to keep the ramp. But the six-foot wall, I think, if you look at these pictures, you're not really getting the full impact of what a six-foot wall is going to look like. I think that is perhaps for me the most prominent and negative feature. And I would agree with the chair's point, that if it had some sort of, I'll use the word fenestration, some sort of visibility through whatever is put there. I mean, I realize there's a desire to create some form of barrier, but the fact of a solid wall there is, that's distressing.
Right. It's a solid wall, and neither does it actually continue sort of a kind of treatment along the ground floor, nor does it create any sort of interaction with people in the public. So I think that should be restudied as well. So it seems its material, re-study the wall itself, the canopy, completely rethink if not remove completely. I think nobody will have a problem with that. And I think that Michael's point is well-taken about the treatment of the fenestration and using more industrial materials. Diana, are you going to say something?
Yeah, I just, I agree with everything that's being said. One, that the color really draws attention to itself in a negative way. The fenestration should be more typical of the original garage, which easily suits a restaurant very, very well. The, the wall needs to be perforated if it exists at all, because it's just much too solid and intrusive into the environment there. And the canopy as well needs, you know, the whole thing needs to fit more within the district, although it's not a contributing building in both style, materials, color. But I think you've given a lot of guidance to the applicant there.
And just that it should relate more to the adjacent buildings than to its parent or its whatever is relative behind it.
Right. I think we've made, I think we've all made that very clear. That art, right. I agree.
Which is what?
And so we don't care if it's to the other building yet.
Which is what Chris was.
Right. In fact, we don't. We, I think our concern is really about how this relates to our district. Any other comments? Yes, Michael.
Very brief ADD moment. I recently dined in a place called The Blind Pig in Paris, which was exactly this kind of building. They didn't even clean the brick. What they did was get the diesel fuel smell out of the interior. Food was served out of the food truck in the garage, and their, and their motto was Charm Brooklynian.
All right. So I think we've given direction. We can, we'll close the hearing, but we'll have you come back for a public meeting when you've responded to our comments. Does that make a motion to?